Good evening. Good evening. Thank you for joining us. We're going to go ahead and get started. We're going to call the Castle Hills Special City Council meeting to order, Special City Council and Budget Work Session, number four to order and determine if a quorum is present. A quorum is present. We will proceed with the Pledge of Allegiance. Chief Zuniga, will you lead us? Thank you, Chief. Okay, Mr. Rapley, I don't imagine we have any citizen comments?
None at this time, Mayor.
Perfect. We will proceed with item 4.1, Presentation Discussion Possible Action Regarding the City Sanitation Fund and Operations. Mr. Rapley. We're still waiting for Mr. Boehner to get on.
I think the presentation mirrors that. Right there.
This one?
Yeah. All right, Mayor Council, obviously, this is the fourth Budget Work Session. This morning, I believe I sent you a memo that kind of covers some of the items we want to discuss today. I have a presentation here that covers an overview of all of the items in general. We'll have a consultant on the line for the American Rescue Funds to explain and give you a breakdown of those funds. And then we have some IT consultants who are engaged to review and assess our IT infrastructure and potentially work with us moving forward on our IT services. But more importantly, I wanted to be able to have some discussion with them about our IT infrastructure currently and what are some of our options and what those options may look like for funding. Real quick, I'll go through. I wanted to cover these points today. Sanitation Operation Funds. Mr. Harada's here in case there's any questions operationally. Seed IT Infrastructure, American Rescue Plans, and next steps. And with that, I wanted to talk about, you know, the sanitation fund itself. You know, our goal, these last two budget cycles has really been to kind of bring it up to par to where, you know, the revenues meet the expenditures. You know, the increase has been over the last 10 years, it's been necessary to bring it up. I know we've talked about that till I'm kind of blue in the face. And I hate to be the current city manager as the messenger to say that we need to make some changes here. Obviously, last year, council adopted 50 cent increase. Our goal last year was $2 total to bring it up from a revenue to meet expenditure standpoint. The projected year-end expenditures, 525,000, obviously versus the revenue of 465, still shows we're in a bit of a deficit, mainly due to landfill costs which have impacted expenditures based on increased tonnage cost fees. Since 2015, landfill costs 38%. And then, of course, in the adopted budget last year, we had 130,000 built in. I think we're closer to or going to be close by the end of the year, about 140,000 as far as cost of the landfill. And then in the proposed budget, I have put in 140,000. But as you can see through the table there, total revenue since 2016, and then the sanitation expenses across the board, which shows we're still running a bit in the deficit. One of the things I heard from council is to sort of look at some options on how we can improve its services across the board. You know, a 50 cent increase equates to about 10,200 new revenue. And the proposed budget includes a $1.50 increase already on top of that rate. Mr. Harada has done some research. I know the mayor mentioned these. I call them lifters. What do you call them, Mayor?
I believe one of the company calls them a rototipper.
Rototipper. So you put the containers on there, it tips over. And the idea is that we could outfit our sanitation trucks and include a twice-a-year bulk collection for approximately 20,000 annually. So we could be able to purchase those, outfit our trucks, and then be able to encompass the costs of the bulk collection for our residents as well. Obviously, that is not built into the additional $1.50. So what I've looked at is if we were to involve another $1.50 increase to the rate, which is not factored into the proposed, this would absorb the cost for these potential new services and outfit the trucks. And if we need to, the front loaders for brush that were staged at City Hall, I don't know if I provided City Council, but we had a total of seven front loaders over that period of time. And we collected nearly 15 tons at a reasonable cost of just $2,000. So, and of course, those were due to the winter storm and then subsequent storm-related incidents that allowed for us to park the front loader here at City Hall and allow for that to be dropped off by residents. I called it a win-win because, you know, Mr. Harada and his guys were already doing garbage and recycle, and there was just a lot of brush. And I think it was very positive and a lot of residents really liked the ability to come and provide that brush. And in the end, it saved total tonnage rates to the landfill that would have gone by Mr. Harada transporting it there. So there was a savings, I believe. Overall, as far as the tonnage there for brush versus what would have gone at the landfill. Do you agree, Mr. Harada? Yeah. So labor and equivalent to tonnage fees at the landfill. Here, what we wanted to do here was talk about what other cities are doing for sanitation services. What we wanted to do is, and I appreciate Mr. Zamiron and Ms. Tedford, they did a lot of the legwork for finding out what other cities do and doing a survey itself. And out of the 19 cities, three are still doing municipalization. Essentially, collectors on back of trucks, which is Alamo Heights, Tarrell Hills, Almost Park. And then, of course, us as currently municipalized. We kind of tried to break this down, but it's not apples-to-apples comparison. But, you know, once a week for garbage, recycle, brush, twice a week, except for like Alamo Heights, they had once a week recycle, no brush pickup at all. Residential rates charge, two cities would only answer out of the general fund. Alamo Heights charged their residents $10 a month, no recycle, no brush. Self-service bulk drop-off and an average price could not be determined given on that data. So again, it's not apples-to-apples. And we made some further calls to Tarrell Hills and Almost Park. And actually, their sanitation services are subsidized, one by the general fund and one through property taxes. But the collections are different. And of course, different sized cities as well. One city had bulk pickup, Alamo Heights, of course, had a drop-off point, and one city did not have bulk pickup at all. Average and pay for collectors. And this is something I mentioned to y'all that we needed to look at because I wanted to stay competitive for Mr. Harada where he's hiring. Majority of the cities, the average was about 1529 hourly, starting out for a collector in those cities. And then we have a starting pay of, I have down 1420, is that correct? 1420 for a collector. So we're not up to what other cities pay starting rate for a collector as municipalized. Here, we have 16 cities. I didn't go ahead and I just put a range here from 751 Population Holloway Park all the way to 44,056 Asher's. Again, this is talking about contracted services. And so there was a range of providers being Republic Waste Management Tiger. 50% of these cities have once-a-week pickup garbage, 50% have twice-a-week. So if you break that down, about 16, eight of them have once a week and the other eight have twice-a-week collection. Go ahead. Yeah, this is the breakdown of the commercial right here. So most used contractors, Republic was about 43% of them. Waste Management being the next 31%, the remaining was 25% of other cities use other contractors. Residential rates, 13 out of 16 responded with an all contractor average, roughly about 1989 was the average. Again, these are small to large cities from that standpoint. Most used contractor Republic had an average monthly charge of these cities that use Republic for residential crates about $18.43. All contractors provide all services. There was a wide variety of frequency across all services in addition to garbage collection. Basically, we went out and asked 19 cities what their frequency rate, what their rate is, how is it funded? What the pay for the starting collector? Trying to remember thing, anything else, Louie? The tempo, the services provided and which services were provided. So it seemed to be that every city was kind of different. But it seemed obviously from what we see here is that majority of them do do the contract services automated. Like Rick said, non-labor automated once a week. And I assume that would be 96-gallon cans. Real quick, wanted to, of course, talk about the seed budget here. We had 4,301, 31,076. This year, we would be expending, obviously, the 55,000 that was approved for the consultants for the comprehensive plan. And then the fire department generator, which was approved back in April. These are the only two expenses this year that would be coming out of the seed currently. That brings us down to about 346,076. Replacement of potential IT servers, that's kind of maybe a low number, 30,000 for right now. Construction accord and conference room and backup chambers, I had 30,000 plugged in two years ago. So I wanted to try to get that re-appropriated back in to get those offices built, which leaves us about 286,076. And that picture depicts me today when one of our servers went down. So. But our IT consultants here will provide you an assessment here on the next agenda item. And I wanted to be able to provide this to you so you have some sense of any other projects you identify before we adopt the budget that you may think you would like to see it come out of the seed fund. American Rescue Plan, I won't go too much into detail because we have our engineering firm, a consultant from that firm here to give you sort of a breakdown of what the funds are, what the eligibility is, and what the uses are. Right now, we're projected to receive about 1,106,503. We're supposed to receive a payment if not late August, early September, and then another one in June 2002. There's many categories I will be focusing in on revenue replacement for revenue loss last year to be able to provide that back into the general fund for purchases, either being one-time or additional requests that are in the FY '22 budget that are not captured right now. My, between myself and other city managers, I've been checking with cities to find out how they will be using those funds, what they are going to be planning to use those funds, and how they are showing that in their budget, which some are using in a special fund, some are using in an general fund line item revenue. And so we have a couple of choices on that. As I mentioned, this was a slide we used the first day when I submitted the budget. These are what is unfunded currently in the budget right now. As you can see, the certification pay, traffic enforcement officer upgrades to the fire department. And then Mr. Harada has requested a 350 field truck for Public Works. And then y'all had approved the generator for City Hall. And I'm leaning towards, obviously, it was approved that we were going to do it in the budget amendment out of the general fund. But what I'm gearing towards is probably using our ARP funds to pay for this because I'm finding out majority of cities I'm speaking to are buying generators for their city hall and/or their facilities. So, and more than likely, we will not have the generator until after January 1st. I guess, right? So we could probably utilize it out of the starting budget of 2022. We had planned again to do a budget amendment, take it out of the general fund this year. So I would probably hold off on doing that right now and go ahead and try to fund it out of the RP. This again, I thought we talked about this, this was the COLA 0 through 3 for employees. Again, our employees didn't get COLAs last year. My recommendation is going to be 3% because they didn't get a COLA last year, and we do not want to get too far behind. We want to try to stay competitive and we want to make sure that we are keeping our employees and not losing them to other cities. Because I have actually, and then we'll get that information to you at the next budget. But I had Ms. Teford's doing a research of other cities of who sit, what cities are giving COLAs this year. And so I'll have that list for you as well. Mayor, can you hit the button? I don't know if something's going on here. There should be a last slide, sorry.
Then that's all that's. Oh, there we go.
Sorry, I had a slide in there, next steps. Obviously, tomorrow we'll be publishing a notice for the tax proposed rate. Public notice for the budget hearing as well will be done. The proposed hearing on the budget will be September 7th at 6:30, and then obviously, on the 14th, we will be adopting the budget levying a tax rate. As we move forward till the September 7th meeting, my plan is to identify funding related to the ARP and presenting it to you at that meeting. So we can incorporate that into the budget and then review any other unfunded items at that time. And then any other things you would like to see as counsel, whether that's seed or other projects, we can discuss that as well on the September 7th meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Rapley. One thing I just want to add in regards to sanitation. When there's been a movement towards many other cities going to private service or commercial service, I should say, I like the idea of us being able to further distance ourselves amongst our colleagues in the region by providing more services. And that's one of the reasons that I had asked Mr. Rapley to look into the rototipper that will allow residents to use a bigger trash can without having our sanitation workers having to lift it themselves. And the opportunity to do bulk drop-off and to continue the brush drop-off that we did this year, I feel like those small things will add feathers in our hat, so to speak, of the benefits of living in Castle Hills. And so often people ask us, what's the difference? Why should I live in Castle Hills? And I feel like the more that we can add to that, the better off we are. It's also important to add that, you know, a lot of our trash service happens in the alley. So going to commercial service would potentially move some of those trashcans to the front streets, which some people may have a problem with. Now, that being said, I think it's important that we take that under heavy consideration. And as well as adjusting the rates, which I told Rick is essential, just given how hard the crews are working out there. We want to make sure that they're getting their fair wage.
And.
Counsel, Mr. Esbrand?
A couple of questions I have. Mr. Rapley, when y'all did this survey of other cities in the hourly rate they pay there, did they express any indication to you of whether they're able to keep their employees at 1529 an hour versus us bleeding employees at 1420 an hour?
I don't know. I'd have to ask Mr. Zamiron if that question came up. But again, that's the starting rate. So go ahead.
There's an average rate of the cities that did respond with municipal services, but we didn't ask about retention.
We can go back and ask. But I, my goal was to show obviously that we are below the starting rate for a collector versus those cities.
Sure, I understand and appreciate that. I'm just curious if, if that's, if that's the threshold at which we begin or if there's some other conversation that has, needs to be had. Because if, if we're paying 1420 an hour and they can't keep people at 1520 an hour, are we going down the right path thinking about it this way is what my question there would be.
I think definitely we can get back with them and find out how their retention level's been on pay. Kind of the timeline, I guess, or the, how long they've had employees or we can get all that information.
On those cities that contract out, it seems like based on what you have here, it's cheaper to contract it out than to have it done. I mean, the rate we pay now is less than these averages that you have here. Have any of these cities reduced their staffs as a result of going to contract services?
That I can find out as well.
And my last question is just sort of the mechanics of trying to picture this. So we can put the lifters on the truck, you can have 96-gallon cans. How do the public works crews get the cans to the lifters to lift them? If we're already having issues with heavy weight? And are we gonna, in a year from now, be going, oh, no, we need to go back to another size garbage can? So I guess my curiosity is if you know cities that do it mechanically the same way, they have to get a garbage can to those pinchers, if you will, to lift it. What challenges or issues they have?
I believe, and Rick, I think those, those come down and they're flat. So all you got to do is place them on top and then it just lifts it over.
Yeah, so.
Squid.
I had seen it used in a city, and that's kind of where, I think that's my picture that I sent you, right?
Yes.
So the way it works is you roll the trash can all the way up to it, and then there's a bar. It comes down, you hook it in the bar, and then it flips it over. So short of wheeling it, there's not a lot of other physical labor that makes it difficult for them to toss it in the back of the truck.
So we would have standardized cans with the wheels and the bar on.
And that's what Mr. Harada brought up. You couldn't go get any trash cans and have to be the one specifically designed for that. And I think in my mind, that at least gives people an option because I realize that the small can that we have now, it's kind of pretty small. And you can obviously use three of them, but then you're kind of making, you know, more cans.
Right. So in those cities that do that, the cities supply the cans, what kind of upfront investment would we have if we had to buy 96-gallon cans for every household?
I don't know that they supply the cans for sure. I can confirm that.
So my last city, that, one of my last cities we worked at, the city had to purchase the 96-gallon cans and then outfit them to the residents. I do know vice versa, that the city can pay for the cans and the contractor can deploy them. But in some way, it's a cost to the city for the 96-gallon cans initially, of course, replacement, so on.
And just, if I may jump in, I don't think there were required to use a 96-gallon can. It's any of the cans that have that bar. So for example, I have a 32-gallon can and it has that bar. So somebody from sanitation could conceivably use my 32-gallon can on this tipper to throw it in.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Appreciate that. One of the things, real quick, the mayor mentioned when we talk about rates is, and I know I've said this because the city has not increased the rates, and last year was the first time in 10 years. Again, I think going back, when you look at the landfill cost, you know, over the last six years, that has not been adjusted accordingly to the landfill cost. So I think if the rates would have been factored in based on the increases of the landfill, I don't think we would be asking for that much at this time, you know? I look back at 2015, maybe if the city would have done an increase, and then maybe in 2020, we're not necessarily in this situation. But we're kind of working backwards here because ultimately, I think landfill costs have not been incorporated into the rates. Yes, sir?
I just have one question about workload. I know salary is really important as we look at the Rick's guys and what he pays them and others pay them, but I'm curious that it was so hard to replace those two guys this year. And I just, it makes me wonder if workload might be part of what's going on. Are the workload that our guys bear, is it similar to what the others bear in other cities? I mean, when, of the eight hours a day that they work, are they lifting seven hours or four hours? And other cities are just lifting two hours? I don't know. Is there any way to, maybe that's not measurable. I don't know. That's my question.
I don't know. I mean, without really getting more into depth about, like I said, it seems like it's not apples-to-apples when we compare other cities that are doing municipalization based on the frequency. But I'm sure that's something I can find out. Of course, we talk about wages, retention, how they operate. I would assume that they're operating on the same level if they're doing twice-a-week collection, eight hours a day, like Mr. Harada and his crew. So.
Yeah, but a lot of them are just doing one time a day.
Yeah.
One time a week, excuse me.
One time a week. There was a couple.
Okay, thank you.
I think if anything, there's, maybe we can get some data tonnage to see if there's any comparison to the communities, how much tonnage that they send off to the landfill if they're municipalized as well. That might be a really comparable rate. But I think the job is not for everybody, the environment. And again, there's a lot of places that need workers, and we're kind of in the same place. You know, we've actually done some things between Mr. Harada, Ms. Davis, myself, to kind of try to think outside the box to, you know, help Rick get a driver for the truck on contract and help with some laborers on contract just to make sure that we're making things happen, and we're not having missed collections, we're getting everything we need. And then as Rick said, it's important when he did have a full crew that those guys were out in the afternoon mowing right-ofways, doing, putting up street signs, doing everything that else that was in Public Works operations was getting done consistently. But it takes manpower.
Mr. Barry?
I noticed you mentioned one city that puts the garbage in the property tax. At least that way, when we're, it looks like we're looking forward to substantially increasing garbage fees for before foreseeable future. Why is it, why can't we put this in the property tax so that at least the homeowner can deduct that from his income tax? You said one city is doing that already.
Yeah, I think Almost Park does it. I would find out how that mechanism looks right now or how that's constructed, how they do it. I do not know how they do it. Again, we, we go through SaaS to do the billing. How that might be funded. Again, we've been subsidizing the general fund right now, but I would have to call Almost Park to find out the mechanics of it.
Certainly would make it more palatable. Are we still providing free healthcare to the employees if they want it?
Yes, it's part of your benefits for an employee only, correct, Nora?
And what is that average of five or $6,000?
So if you have your spouse on there, it goes up a number, and then if you have a family, it goes up another number. So.
So is it about $5,000 or $6,000 a person?
I can get you that number. Employee only at cost. Only the employee. So. Only the employee. So. So right now, employee only, it's no cost. But what that number is, I can get that breakdown.
Well, then I can only relate to where it was a few years ago. It was over five thousand dollars a person. That's a taxable benefit equivalent to about another additional seven thousand dollars a year. If that was paid simply if you eliminated the health benefit and paid it back in terms of cash. We're giving somebody a tax-free benefit that would be basically a taxable benefit of seven thousand dollars a year on top of what they're paid. Are any other cities that you looked at, any other city, providing free healthcare to their employees?
I am not sure, but again, it's going back to do a little bit more in-depth comparison. Like Mr. Isbrand said, wages and other operations, that's something we can do a comparable as far as healthcare. What what Almost Park, what Taral Hills does for their sanitation or public works guys, we can certainly check that.
Because that is quite an enormous incentive. And if we're not really touting, I wonder why not? In the IT servers, if some of this money can it come out of the tech fund? The you want a thirty thousand dollar increase for replacement of IT servers? Can that be paid not out of the budget, but out of the tech fund?
I don't think there's the you talking about the municipal court technology fund?
Don't we have just a pure technology fund?
No, I I believe it's just the municipal.
Just municipal court?
Which the fees from court derive through that. But no, I don't. And plus, I don't think we could generate enough funds out there for the cost of what we need to do from our IT standpoint. So.
I know there's several other funds in here that sort of I wonder why we're even doing it because reason we didn't have a cola last year is because there was virtually no price increases. That's the reason why you didn't have cola.
I would.
So it's not a question of we didn't pay it. It wasn't. Nobody got much of anything.
I would beg to differ. You know, I can ask her. Xena is actually doing a comparison of all the cities and she could probably look back and see which ones got colas. I'd say majority of the cities gave certain percentage of cola to their employees.
Maybe, but the social security was around one percent, if that much.
It was one point six.
The question that I have is at this proposal you've given us, do we have a balanced budget?
Yes, that's what I delivered last.
Okay. Then, but it doesn't. But this budget doesn't cover. And I just wonder how much in the red we're going to go. It I'm just getting off my glasses. So far away. It doesn't cover several different things here. One, new people coming in, colas.
You're probably talking about my transmittal letter that talks about right now that there is no, the budget is balanced. It's as is revenue versus expenditures. Again, I go back to this slide right here that shows unfunded requests. So traffic officer personnel, and that's in my transmittal letter when I say that that does not call for the way the balance, the way the budget's been delivered and balanced does not have any additional personnel in it. That's why it's I wrote it that way because right now it does not. None of these things are in here that would be additional requests.
Neither is a cost of living increase.
There's no cost of living increase.
Well, if you're proposing three percent and that three percent isn't in the budget, that's eighty some odd thousand dollars.
I think that's why we're here tonight to talk to our consultant about the ARP funds, how we would utilize, again, the revenue replacements to be able to go back into the general fund to be able to fund some of these things in the twenty-two budget.
And Mr. Rappley, if I can jump in there, our consultant has a seven thirty hard stop. So if we can get onto that agenda item, we can learn more about how the funds can be applicable.
I have one more question and then I'll be quiet. In two thousand and nine, we actually, we had a great recession. We had deflation of little less than one to the one percent, but we had it. Would you in the future, if and they're talking about all sorts of things in the next year or two, would you, strict when we're looking at salaries in the future, if we have a deflation, would you cut salaries by the inflated amount?
It would maybe a factor I have to look at. Right now, that's not a factor. I can't. I don't have a crystal ball. I can't look into the future. We work off revenue projections, economic indicators, and that may be an economic indicator we look at. But right now, there's nothing that would factor in this current proposed budget. I can't speak to future budgets.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to go ahead and move ahead to item four point three, presentation discussion, possible action on funds related to the American Rescue Plan Act. We have with us Mr. Eric Boning and he is going to help us out, share some knowledge.
All right. Thank you very much for that. Hi, guys. How's it going? As as I was introduced, my name is Eric Boning. I'm just here to talk to you all about the American Rescue Plan a little bit. We can go on to the next slide. So yeah, just a brief intro. I've been dealing with about three hundred and eighty-five million dollars in ARP funds on top of CARES Act funds and some FEMA funds related to COVID nineteen. Next slide. Generally, we already got the estimate on what you guys are going to be receiving. It's about one point one million dollars. I can go on to the next slide. Just a couple of things to keep in mind that the states may not place additional conditions or requirements on these distributions. So the rules as they stand with the federal government or the rules as they stand with you. If TDM tries to impose any other rules, that's a that's not going to be legal. And you want to make sure that that is something that nobody is trying to do for you. Next slide. Next slide. So here's just a a brief overview of some of the things that can be utilized. I think we're going to really focus on the revenue loss at the end. So I'm just going to brush over a lot of what's going on here. You know, we've got public health expenditures, stuff like mental health, substance abuse or things for mitigating the COVID nineteen pandemic. Negative economic impacts, that's stuff related to the recession and the coming recovery. So, you know, if you want to do grants for small businesses, direct payments to homeowners, that's an option too. Next slide. Disproportionately impacted communities. So there's a real focus on those that are, you know, disreally impacted prior to the pandemic that we know are going to be hit harder post pandemic. So there's some special carve-outs for them. There's premium pay for frontline workers. That includes, you know, municipal like public health workers down to grocery store workers. Next slide. Infrastructure, so the the broad allowable infrastructure is water sewer broadband. And then when we get into revenue replacement, we'll talk about some of that other services that get opened up when that happens. Next slide. And eligible costs, so you can't cover any sort of deposits in the pension funds, paying down debt obligations, including settlements or the cost of, you know, getting new debt. Those are all ineligible items. Excellent. So December thirty first, twenty twenty-four is when funds need to be obligated. That means there needs to be a contract in place to expend those funds. And then the thirty first, December thirty first, twenty twenty-six is when funds need to be expended. There's a little asterisk there just because we're working on rules related to revolving funds. So if those can, once you start revolving those funds through, if they still have the same time limits. Next slide. So thirty days after the state of Texas has received the funds from the treasury, that's when they need to distribute them back to you guys. They can ask for a sixty day extension if there's some extenuating circumstances. You know, it's too difficult to get it out in that timeframe. But that's that's when y'all should be receiving your funds thirty days after a state gets it. Next slide. So I'm just going to give a brief overview. We've been working with the CARES Act fund prior to this, which is a similar type of treasury funds. Now we've been working with the ARP and we've actually moved pretty, pretty deep along. We have a lot of a what I've been working on is actually implementing some programs. We'll go to the next slide. And really, the the whole point of these slides is to demonstrate that it's kind of a new source of funding. And there are some avenues that in other disaster funds like FEMA and HUD are well-worn. These, you know, we're still kind of building the ship while we're flying it. By we, I mean the treasury in the United States. So there's there. There can be some some caveats, unexpected stuff and some things that will be surprising or unusual versus like a FEMA or a HUD funded project. Next. So a couple of things just to keep in mind, if you case you aren't, you know, familiar with federal funds, you know, you got to comply with two CFR. So these really have a lot to do with procurement, how how you can deal with reasonableness and some some of the finer points of extraneous costs related to projects. And then also, since you receive above seven hundred and fifty thousand, you're going to be subject to a single audit of the funds each year that you have them. Next slide. Some of the things we've learned about, there's a categorical safe harbors. So people who are in qualified census tracts, low to moderate income households, these are populations that if you can show that the population was affected, then you can utilize funds for them. The interim final rule, a lot of what they focus on is on disproportionately impacted population in the narrative. So low income, black, Hispanic, Latino, women, folks suffering from substance abuse. This is where, when you read the text of the final rule, you see what what's kind of going on in the mind of the crafters. So on to revenue loss, which is really what I want to focus on here. So this, this is a graph provided by treasury and it shows how you can project revenue loss. You know, it's back to your last full fiscal year. And they allow you to protect to to claim revenue loss in the net coming three years. So you're not just slated to twenty twenty. Next slide. So when you're doing the calculations, you can't include federal transfers, intergovernmental transfers, revenues from utilities, refunds and correcting actions, proceeds from the issues of debt, liquor store revenue. There's it's it's captured as general government services, which is broadly defined as the the census survey definition. So what is in basically everything that's not listed above taxes, fees, other revenues? And yeah, some if you're generating funds from certain facilities like amusement parks, the whatnot, those count as well. Next slide. So here, here's the calculation. I also provided JR with a a good spreadsheet that can allow you to do document, to do your revenue loss calculations and kind of figure that aspect out. But yeah, you should calculate it on entity-wide basis. So kind of understanding everybody that's within your purview and calculate them as one use. And then we'll go to the next slide. So part of doing the calculations that the treasury is accounted for is including a four point one percent growth rate. Or if you can show that you are having a a stronger than four point one growth rate and you can demonstrate that, they will allow you to utilize that. So when they're doing the calculations too, it's on it's on a calendar year, not on a fiscal year. So say if you're, you know, if if your last fiscal year prior to twenty twenty ended in June of twenty nineteen, you'd calculate from June of twenty nineteen to December thirty first of twenty twenty. So yeah, we can go on to the next slide. Eligible uses broadly stated, if if your government does it and it's kind of forward thinking, it's going to be eligible. So whereas water sewer and infrastructure were the categories that were allowed previously, now we're we're into kind of a broader realm, like like as was mentioned before, we can use a what's called, we can buy generators. A lot of people are doing that. You can do roadwork, you can do maintenance on infrastructure, cybersecurity improvements. So you just kind of open up to a broader level of what y'all have been doing previously. Next slide. So yeah, I just kind of wanted to run through that because I feel like a lot of times it's, you know, some of y'all might know this, some of you might not. And my my experience is really better at what what we've been working with, what our clients have been utilizing funds for. So at this point, I just want to open it up.
Thank you, Mr. Boning. I know you have a seven thirty hard stop, but I just wanted to give my colleagues an opportunity to ask you some questions as it relates to ARPA funding. Mr. Joyce?
Just one quick question, please, Mr. Boning. On your infrastructure slides in the early portion of your presentation, one thing the act will ally will be water sewer and broadband, but not electric. Is is there some logic to that? I, you know, I don't understand it. Or is that just the way it is?
I I could not tell you the logic behind it, but that is is just the way it is. They wanted to focus on water projects, sewer projects and then getting water and sewer, I think that's just more of a popular item. And then the broadband, since we had the twenty twenty pandemic and everybody started going remote, realized the necessity for having good access to good internet was kind of a a a strong need within the country.
Thank you.
Since the federal government is going to scrutinize how we spend these monies, should these funds be segregated from the general fund?
Yes, I I do recommend having a special fund associated with it. What we usually do with other municipalities is set up a special fund and then do appropriations out of those funds for the the different projects that we are intending to utilize them for. And then likewise, in your budgeting and finance system, have coding to track these funds separate and apart from what you would normally utilize, you know, by either by index funds or something of the like.
Mr. Rappley?
Eric, this is Ryan Rappley, city manager. So obviously, I've talked to different cities that have incorporated the revenue in their line item for their general fund and then also put it in separate funds as well. So again, if we come up with a revenue replacement loss funding, that would be in a separate fund, but you can show a transfer to the general fund, correct?
Yes, that is correct. What you want to do is you want to make it simple for your auditors that are going to come in and review it to, you know, you have the breadcrumbs. It's like, okay, we took it out of the special fund and we appropriated it to do, you know, to to put in some power lines going down this lot as is eligible under a revenue loss category. Now you can tie it directly back to how you moved it out of that special fund.
Mr. Boning, I had a quick question. One of the items that you said that is recoverable is taxes. I'm assuming that includes sales tax, correct?
Yes, that does include sales tax.
Perfect. And Mr. Paul?
Go back to the generator. We just committed and purchased sixty thousand dollars. I'm using this as a simple example of what I'm thinking it's working or how I'm thinking. We can replace the budget or the operating funds for the sixty thousand dollars out of these funds?
Yeah. So since you purchased, oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead. I'm sorry.
No. Yeah. So since you already purchased them, but you purchased it after March second of twenty twenty-one. So it still counts as an eligible item. So what you would utilize is you would do the the transfer out of your special funds for the sixty thousand dollars into your general fund. And then as far as your backup documentation for that, you would one have your revenue loss that you showed that allowed you to use those sixty thousand dollars and then the purchase of that that generator.
Essentially, Eric, that'd be a like a one-time capital expenditure transfer.
That is correct.
And Mr. Rappley, I'm assuming as we get further into the budget, you will show us how you intend to fund some of the unfunded expenses through the ARPA funding?
That is correct, Mayor. And as Eric mentioned, there's a GF Way worksheet. I was told it's fairly simple, but I will be engaging our financial consultant to help me calculate the potential revenue loss to determine what may need to go back into the general fund as losses and then identify how the mechanism is crafted for one-time expenditures, whether that is a generator or any other purchases. or any other purchases that would come from the fund and identify it through the transfer to the general fund to purchase it.
Thank you, Mr. Rapley. Counsel, do we have any more questions for Mr. Boning? Perfect, Mr. Boning. Uh, you got five, ten minutes till, uh, thank you so much for your time.
Thank you so much. And if y'all think of any questions, just, you know, JR has got my contact and I'm happy to, to respond if anything comes to your mind later.
Thank you, sir.
All right. Thank you.
Okay, Council, we're going to slide back to four point two presentation discussion and possible action on community infrastructure economic development, funding seed, including a presentation on the city's information technology infrastructure, possible executive session pursuant to Texas government code, section five, five, one dot zero, eight, nine deliberation regarding security devices or security audits. Mr. Rapley?
Thank you, Mayor. If you want to go ahead and should be ready to put in the presentation there. Um, as I mentioned in my memo that I sent out to y'all, we, uh, we're looking obviously at, at trying to identify proposed expenditures that would procure hardware in order to bring our current infrastructure uh, to current security related standards. Um, we have representatives here from Salco. Um, we've engaged them um, right now to have an assessment of our IT infrastructure done. I liked what they've come up with, uh, in no way in any related to IT expertise. But they laid it out in simplest terms to show how our IT infrastructure is set up and what we need to do to work to secure our IT services for vulnerability standpoint. And then again, I feel like I'm the ba, the bearer of bad news with the sanitation fund and they can go into detail about our IT servers because we have, I believe, seven, seven chief? I look at the chief because he's also acting IT director, but just kidding, chief. But we have about seven servers and uh, majority of them are uh, in the area of two thousand eight, two thousand five, two thousand twelve. And so, um, because nothing was done in the past to update, uh, maintain or upgrade our servers, we're in a current situation like today when one crashed uh, from that standpoint. So uh, we have representatives here from Salco, uh, that will provide the presentation overview. Um, we will conduct this meeting in public, but I did reserve the right for executive session. If we wanted to get into the details, um, I consulted with Mr. Schnall because we obviously didn't want to in public talk about any vulnerability or security risk to our system. But I think they have a presentation which gives you a pretty good overview that would kind of help you understand our current situation with our IT infrastructure. And uh, if there's follow-up questions related to that, um, we could probably send out another memo that's um, via Mr. Schnall. From him as our attorney with any questions you might have to them, so they can get that back to me. And that might be the best way to get to your answers about the uh, current IT, at least from a, from a vulnerability and risk standpoint. So I'll turn it over to them. Jerry, go ahead.
Thank you so much for joining us. Please, uh, don't hesitate to let us know if something's too sensitive to answer in public.
We are going to talk at a very, very high level for that reason. So, um, we'll definitely take questions as we go along and, and answer them appropriately so that we're not exposing anything for you guys. So I'm Jerry Jones, by the way. I'm Director of Client Success for Salco. This is Fernando Martinez. Okay. So it's a little bit about the company. We're from San Antonio. We're just literally five minutes down the road. Which is nice. So we, we visit all of our clients who work with quite a few municipalities, a lot of government agencies, a lot of healthcare. So a lot of things that are compliant related and have to maintain a certain level of, you know, compliance and security.
Yeah. And kind of put to that, we're also government contractors as well, so Schedule seventy. So we are familiar with, you know, what is required for the cybersecurity and everything. So this is kind of what we do as well. And we work with pretty large counties here in Texas as well uh, for that. And we can provide those references of what uh, also we have done with them and, you know, basically what we looked at the overview of you guys.
As you guys found out today, the light at the end of the tunnel is not always a, a way out. It's an oncoming train, which is our technology. It's going to eventually crash. So, so Fernando and I did a very high level um, discovery assessment of the environment. So these were a couple of the things that we are deemed pretty critical. One is the current email solution. Um, it, it's, it's very nineties in thinking, meaning it's, it's, it's easy to be exposed. So one of the things that I look at in bringing up email is the IC three or the Internet Crimes Division of the FBI published in their twenty twenty report that business email compromise was, I think it ranked number nineteen, meaning that out of everything that was reported. So it was right at twenty thousand incidents reported last year for all of US. However, it was one point nine billion dollars in losses. It was the number one loss and it is all strictly through your email. So that's definitely a top area that needs to be addressed. The other, as you guys have found out today, the, the servers are that house critical data, whether it's data related to staff or your residence or finances or is on outdated old technology. Meaning if it breaks, more than likely, they're not going to get a replacement part. So as, as the trouble that we're having getting new systems because of the chip issue, a supply chain issue, they're not going to get parts for how old the, the hardware is. So there's nothing that's kind of backing that up in place. So.
Yeah. Basically to add to that is the longer you wait on, on replacing these systems, it's like trying to find parts for a classic car. You know, it just gets harder and harder and, and just they're obsolete. So that's basically what happens with servers, you know, in the computer world. You know, a computer every two months is just, it's, it's gone. You know, you go to Best Buy, you go in a month again, that computer's not there. That's just, you know, how it quickly um, gets obsolete. So same, same thing with servers. It's kind of something that it is important. But also again, we want to address that it's important because of the vulnerabilities, you know, not updating it puts you in that
Right.
cyber risk.
Right. Which leads us to running older outdated operating systems. I know it's in the news all the time, ransomware attacks and patching and Microsoft patching. Um, and there are operating systems that no longer get patched because of the age of the system. And there are a couple that are potentially on the network like that. So, so therefore they're, they're at risk. And then the last would be the SAN, which is our storage area network. So it's a fancy word for a big box that holds all the data. That's been out of warranty for quite some time. And again, not knowing what data's on there, we can't really speak to what, what you would lose if it went down, but I can tell you the age of that device. They do not make those hard drives anymore. So our quick plan to remediate these vulnerabilities. Well, this is easy. So this Microsoft Office three sixty five will bring you guys up to a level where you can do, implement security policies and procedures. That's definitely a quick thing. And, and then the other is obviously new hardware to address the hardware issues. And with that, I choose not to, you know, talk about some of the other vulnerabilities.
Yeah. So, so the plan is basically
Mr. Martinez, I hate to interrupt you. Um, that microphone doesn't pick you out. So have you, you want to start it a little bit?
Yeah. So, so the plan is to be, uh, you know, proficient and basically, you know, kind of proactive and start getting on the plan of replacing uh, the servers, right? Uh, these, this hardware to get on a plan where you're at a, you know, level playing field where in a cybersecurity world and, you know, where everything is u- up to date, basically. Um, so again, there's the plan of installing the latest systems or just operating systems, everything that ways it gets you up to date. Also, um, your applications that you guys are running. I, I won't mention one, but basically getting your applications up to date as well is also a requirement in a, in order to stay uh, at that level where everything is, you know, at a good playing field on the cyber world. Um, and part of this also would be to, you know, migrate all the applications from old hardware to new hardware. So it'd be a full, you know, project that would take quite some time. All right. Yeah. So some of the critical areas of concern were basically during the site visit during the assessment was part of it is we, we would recommend having redundancy within your network within everything like, I mean, again, today was a good example of, you know, server went down because there's not a redundancy within the server. Also, the prime, the main network doesn't have redundancy. By redundancy, we mean two. Um, so basically a way to fell over or somehow where you guys are still running. Um, so every time it's down, it just causes uh, headaches within your, within the city. Um, some of the equipment is, is unmanaged and aging. So again, that recommendation is, you know, to replace it. Think of this equipment like a light bulb, right? It's been on for years. Light bulb eventually is going to die. You know, doesn't matter what you paid for it, but it's going to die eventually. So it's just, again, it has to be replaced. It's twenty four, on twenty four, seven. Um, same thing with the desktops, um, are out of warranty. So a lot of them are running, again, unsupported operating systems. And again, the recommendation is to uh, upgrade these to the current operating systems that are recommended by Microsoft at this point.
May I interrupt with one quick question?
Yes, sir.
With new technology, do we really need seven servers?
Repeat that again?
Probably not. Probably not, but from the level of discovery that we were able to do, it's kind of a like versus like, and there's quite a few physical out there. And so once we can do, you can leverage something like virtualization technology and have one or two servers that house quite a few, and there could be old data that's sitting out there that just needs to be archived.
The reason I was asking if you start over and start over from scratch and had four or five servers that were adequate, it might be cheaper in the long run. You just try to do the whole pattern.
Right.
And that's why I was asking the question.
Yeah, no, absolutely.
Right. And kind of to answer to that, right now you have a lot of uh, physical servers, as in like they, they're physical boxes.
And with the new plan, more patching, more downtime.
More downtime, more
Put them all on some, okay.
With the new system to be less server.
Question.
Yeah.
And, and Mr. Paul too, that they're also before purchase, there, there could be the idea of actually leasing the equipment as well. So, yeah. So just, sorry, just want to let you know that.
All right. And we've kind of, kind of provided you guys a quick roadmap of where we would like to get you guys on. Um, so part of it is to, you know, there's a, some NIST compliances, CGIS compliance, compliance standards that we would like to get you on. Uh, just like other cities, um, that are already on it. And so basically be able to certify you, stamp you as, you know, you're compliant to those standards and be able to at least sleep at night to where you know that, you know, I've got this compliance. I know that I can at least, you know, know that it's, I'm somewhat secure. As in, is it possible to always hack a system? Yes, but it's at least you did the safeguards to it and you can kind of wash your hands and say, I did what I had to do and but the rest is kind of up to keeping up with the, with all the hardware, cybersecurity, everything that goes on with it, the, basically the, the maintenance to it at that point. And then part of it also is again, replacement of network equipment, um, getting a good disaster recovery solution. Um, again, it's kind of today, you know, server went down. There was a disaster recovery. So, you know, backups, data, also if in the case that something were to happen to the building where the servers are housed, you know, will the city even exist, right? So that had, you have to have a plan in place also of continuation, uh, business continuity, con- continuation somehow. So that's also a recommendation. Um, one of the other things is also a, uh, what's called a SIM. Uh, basically something that uh, monitors your network, uh, in the cybersecurity world. So that's just a small recommendation on top of that is of course, the, the refresh again of whatever hardware you have, everything from desktops, network equipment to, to the servers. Questions?
Mr. Joyce?
Thanks for that presentation, you guys. We appreciate that. Um, two quick questions. First one, will what you're proposing prevent the city from being attacked by those ransomware folks that we read about these days where they get into your server and shut everything down?
Yes, that is the objective to get you guys there. Yes.
Okay. Very good. Second question is, um, is part of your deal with the city to propose kind of a roadmap and a cost of all of these things that you're suggesting?
Yes, sir.
When will we see that?
The first thing would be do a risk assessment. We don't know what we don't know. So we've not gone in and looked at everything holistically. We basically did a site walkthrough and kind of took notes and looked at serial numbers, but to do a full-blown IT risk assessment based on NIST compliance and that will define that roadmap. So that was step one in that last slide. So it's really just to go in and look at everything from, do you have the correct policies? Are you, your, your employees getting cybersecurity training? Is there redundancy in your network? You know, what layers of security do you have? And then what, what do you, you know, steps need to take? And then as we see that, then we can put budgetary numbers with, with that.
Okay, thanks.
Well, based on what you're saying though, seems to me like it's just easier to come in and assume that we need to start from scratch. And it'd be a lot easier than worrying about picking in each corner and seeing what's on the each cob web. If I'm
That's almost true. That's almost true. However, you know, people want to see the data differently.
Pardon my analogy, but you know.
Mr. Isbrand?
So actually my question kind of spins off from Mr. Paul's comment there. When you look at environments like this with uh, antiquated, across the board in antiquated system, systems, do you typically say, let's go in there and replace everything? Or do you say over the course of the next number of years, you progressively replace so that you can build a life cycle for the next generation of equipment replacements?
That can be done in two different, that can be done in two different ways. Uh, and that's usually based on capital or opic expenditure. So basically we would put the whole budget upfront and then you guys decide how you want to do that. So if it becomes an op expenditure where everything is leased out, that can be done almost immediately. If it's going to be some kind of a, you know, op fixed and, you know, again, we can, it just depends how you want to budget it. But yes, it can be done over a series of a couple of months, years or all of
So councilman, I, I would like to, as a part of that risk assessment, we started finding out the totals is to build out a five-year plan for um, either upgrade or replacement of our IT infrastructure. Uh, again, the idea that um, we want to try to address the most vulnerable and the most required servers right now, um, is what I'm trying to get funded, um, as part of this next budget. But my goal is to build a five-year plan. So whoever is here, myself or any other city manager has that in place to know what needs to be done five years from now.
In, in your um, profession and dealing with entities similar in size to what we have, is that typically the type of recommendation you would make to look at in a multi-year phased approach to it?
Typically, yes. So it's really going to depend on your critical, what, what's extremely vulnerable? Like how vulnerable are you? And how many things we need to check that to where there's a level of comfort that says, okay, we can budget this out because it's not, it's old, but it's not an additional risk. So it's address all of that and then, and then map that out. Yeah.
Mr. Paul?
It's me again. You're software people then.
We're hardware and software.
Well, you, you don't make your own hardware, do you?
No.
No.
Okay. I mean, y- y- you install hardware, but you don't make your own hardware. And you should obviously then shop the hardware to make sure that we get the state of the art for the cheapest price we can get, excuse me, least expensive.
Absolutely.
Right.
Okay. I, I didn't think you had a factory, but I just wanted to be sure. You're software solution people, correct? Thank you.
Mr. Gregory?
Does ACOG or TML give a recommendation as to what cities should have?
Yes. But I think right up front, it's going to be kind of where you need to be to be stable. And then it'll be recommendations on improvements from that. My first action will be to get the environment stable.
Again, I think the most important thing, if we reserve the right for executive session, I think there's more in depth that y'all need to know down the road. So uh, time is of the essence to try to address our IT infrastructure. Let's put it that way.
How many other cities do y'all work with in the Alamo area?
Here in San Antonio, here in San Antonio, none, but we do work with other, other counties here in Texas.
How many cities or counties in Texas?
Could be a handful, but we can provide you exactly those, the list.
I'd be curious. I, I've also heard that sometimes some of these companies and their IT companies, I guess that's the easiest way to describe it. I have been compromised and some of that flows downhill. I guess my question to you all is, have you all been compromised recently?
We have not, no. And we, same thing, we are, we have to put the same safeguards that you guys have. And also because we are government contractors, we also have to adhere to the same NIST CMMC standards. That they're hired, actually higher level standards than you guys. But as our company is vocal, we have to adhere to those standards. So we actually report to, to the Fed on a lot of the, our side, our internal cybersecurity. And in order to get that, those certifications, we always, we also have to get third party IT company to audit us as well. So it's not, we can't just say, we're going to, we're going to, this is our stamp. It, it gets audited to two other IT companies to get that certification.
Got you. What are your opinions on PIV ID?
Basically, if you go to that type of system for that, for CAT, you're talking about like CAT cards and all that.
Yes.
It is a great system. It, it will implement, require a budget for that. Do you guys already have the card? Are you guys already using those type of cards?
Not yet. That's one of the things that I've been advocating for, but we're waiting till we decide on a IT provider before we proceed.
Okay. Yes, we can make recommendations when you guys are working with that. And you're planning to use those for your access control, your ID badge.
That was kind of my hope. So we have an ID card already. But my idea was if we could go to a PIV ID card that would provide a physical analogical. Encryption that that could allow us to use it for everything.
Yes, that, that is, that is highly recommended because it's considered two factor at that point.
Right.
Two, two, two ways of authenticating on a machine.
And so y'all are comfortable and familiar and you've done that before?
Yes.
We have any other questions, counsel? Okay. Thank you all so much.
Thank you.
Okay, we will jump down to item 4.4, discussion of possible action on the proposed FY 2022 budget. Mr. Rapley?
Thank you, Mayor. Again, as I mentioned in my memo, I reserved this agenda item to discuss. Anything that you had related to the proposed budget, any other items you'd like to see incorporated? Or have me look at to come back to y'all at a future date? Obviously, you can see by tonight that, you know, how we essentially use our ARP funds. And the mechanism to provide purchases in there. Obviously, you find out that we can put in a special fund, transfer to the general fund for uses, depending on the categories. And obviously, there's an array of eligibility, which I think that we can probably define in our budget moving forward. Again, I will be working with our. Consultants on those things as well, who's just helped another city with ARP funding as well. And then again, I wanted to hone in on our IT infrastructure that time is of the essence. I wanted to make sure I capture some dollars in the seed right now to make sure that we're able to move forward. If, for instance, a server does go down right now, we would eventually just go ahead and purchase it, come back to city council at that time. Because of that need. And as they mentioned, there is a delay with purchase and installation probably with a server. But this is why I wanted to move on it because. I feel we're a little antiquated and. Again, I hate to bring it forward, that should have been done in years past, but it's time now to address it, get it done. And make sure we don't talk about it until five years from now with a plan. So with that, I didn't know if there's anything else you wanted me to talk about in the proposed budget to research, review, bring back, Mr. Paul?
Is this, I have a couple of questions on this. I won't go into details.
Yes, sir.
This, this is the budget, basically. In your write-up, you said there's no additional personnel. I see that the police department has $107,000 proposed budget increase over last year or this year, I should say. And if that doesn't include personnel, that's an awful lot of additional money. Number two, in your introduction letter, you talk about you put a slight. I don't know how you can do slight, added the expense to the TMRS. But yet, when I look at each of the departments, I see a slight decrease in the TMSR funds. So where would you put that? And why would you put that in there ahead of time without discussion on that? Just a couple of questions.
So we, we got a new rate through TMRS and it's divided between the departments, correct, Nora?
So it's gone up?
Yeah.
Gone down. Okay, there's, that's why the decrease, but then you said you put in a slight in there, but if it's gone down. I, I guess I'm slow.
So again, I guess from a TMRS standpoint, it's gone down. But as far as the increase in salaries, that has to do like.
Sure.
Again, with promotions and certifications, I believe, chief?
I guess, I guess the only reason I'm asking is that you pointed it out and to me that would be automatic.
Yeah.
But anyway, okay.
And, and Mr. Paul, again, the idea that there is not a new personnel position in any of the departments. It just has to do with increased salary, salaries, both police, fire, even some administration from that standpoint.
Okay, again, $107,000 seemed to be a lot for one year in the police department, based upon experience of where we've been on the police department. And that being said, don't mean to be putting you on the spot, chief. But I just saw that and you know me, I'm slow. I just try to figure out where we are.
Well, we have to, we have to, we have to put salaries in the proposed budget based on the number of.
Sure.
Staff members within the police department. So right now, there, we have what, 26, 27? 20? With dispatchers. So those are plugged in appropriately as if we were completely full. Right now, we're, we're not full. We're down a couple officers.
So then why did it go up? The expenditures $107,000 if we're not full?
Again.
That's my question.
Through promotions and certifications in the police department.
Okay, that's just awful. Okay, except I look at that. It just seemed like an awful lot, a big increase from year to year, even though we've had promotions in the past.
And I can get, get you all the exact breakdown of what that looks like, too.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Paul.
And the, again, as we talked about in delivery of the budget, we've put in a certain factor for health insurance, you know? So we're hoping that that rerate is like last year comes down to single digits as well.
Mr. Gregory?
Don't you think this budget should have included in, in it? A percentage of increase for salaries that you're suggesting? Also, your salary off and various things like that?
I have not taken that into account. I mean.
My question is why not?
Because right now. It, it has not been approved by council. If that's something we want to look at as we move through the adoption process. Again, whether it's COLAs, my salary, that's something we can include. I'm just basically saying, here's the expenditures that we think are next year. Here is the revenues we think next year and providing that balanced budget. But it does not, it does not, again, account for COLA increases. It just increases in police and fire and other departments that had promotions and or certification. Or promote, what was that certification? But, uh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, chief.
Mayor Council, if I may, some of these things, Mr. Paul, that are included is not just the salaries themselves. There's other things that are included in that total amount, which also includes the traffic unit officer. So, but that. I'm sorry.
It's not included.
That's why, that's why I thought it was kind of large. The new position was isolated somewhere else, but it, if it's in there, that's good.
Yeah. No, it's, it's taken out and it's not in there right now. So.
Well, Steve, you understand, first of all, you, you, you're, you're my best chief right now. But you know why I'm asking? Because it is quite a large increase.
Right.
Over year, over year, based on what we've had in the past. That's why I'm asking the question.
But there are some other things that are also factored in that amount, the, the training amount, we, we increased it.
I know it's not all salaries. I understand that.
Correct. That's all I'm just saying is it's spread out between the different line items, not just the salaries.
Well, the other question I have, Mr. Rapley, I'm sorry to be taking the time here, but.
No, this is.
When we talking about adding to, you've already established. According to the budget, that these are our projected revenues. Okay, so that's, that's a given. Obviously can be flexible. That's a given. And then you've already spent that money then. Then where would we get money to do the other things if we came up with such as COLA, such as other things? Where would that money come from?
Well, again, I think I'm, I'm working on trying to determine, like, for instance, the ARP funds that come in. To figure out what that dollar amount might look like to transfer back into the general fund that we could utilize. For these one-time purchases or essentially some of the personnel purchases. The other alternative is, again, if council wishes to taking a one-time. Transfer from the fund balance to be able to get these things done. So that's two options.
Well, then we're not really ready to go into this as far as detail until you give us these options that we look at. Based upon the potential of A or COLA or B, some of the other things that you're talking about because.
Yeah.
They're not, they're not.
Again, I think that's why I mentioned on the September 7th meeting, I'd come back with.
Okay.
Sort of options on those.
Okay.
And then you'd have a week to figure out in between there on the adoption on the 14th.
And Mr. Rapley, if I can tie this together, I think the idea is to provide a mission critical budget. And then to be able to subsidize that from the ARPA funds for some of the unfunded. I guess pushes from the department heads and from the council members. Is that correct?
Absolutely, Mayor.
Well, I think that's a good idea. The problem with, we gotta make sure that we take the money from the ARC funds and use them appropriately. But to me, they need to be purchases because we gotta be careful that we don't rely on the funds. And approve something that's going to have, keep going year and year and year and year after that. Because we'd be, the, the ARC fund will be gone. So anyway, I look forward to it.
Yeah.
Mr. Joyce?
Oh, just an observation and a suggestion. And looking through all the different departments, it seems that. All departments except for streets and sanitation have received an increase in their budget year over year. So I would suggest that we think about trying to get more of a balance there, especially in need of the potential salary issues and sanitation guys. And.
And to that point, Mr. Joyce, that, that we have come up with, you know, Rick and his department, they have. There's a pay scale based on the time you're there that's been in place since. I don't know how long, Rick, but long before I got here and 10 prior city managers. But there is a, a scale that they use based on the time that they've been with the department. So we probably have to adjust that if we're going to increase the starting pay as well, that we can build into the salaries there for the sanitation.
Oh, yeah. Yeah. Okay. So we agree.
Yeah. So no, we do. And I think Nora has already kind of developed what that scale or ladder might look like for the employees over there. If we were to raise the, the collector, the starting salary up. So that would be adjusted accordingly.
Okay, I just, another comment if I may on your COLA thing. I think, if I'm not mistaken, Chief has suggested all the firefighters get a little bit of an increase. And that increase varies based on position. Is that not the case?
So I think what he's trying to request, which would be certification pay. Which is right now would be an additional 23,000, I believe. 24,000 to certification across the board. And again, that isn't just one time, that would continue as we move forward in the fire department.
Okay, I just thought it was more because the salary line is $50,000 higher than it was a year ago.
In the fire department?
Yes.
And again, that could be a combination of the salary increases based on promotions. And then salary, and then line item increases in the department itself.
Okay.
So again, that's part of.
The point I was trying to make is if, if some departments already are getting increases, maybe they don't need a COLA. That's the only point I'm trying to make.
Gotcha.
And the other question I have is the thing I text you about earlier today. I don't know if. We have got an answer, but on this, I, I don't get this TMRS retirement system thing. And I'm not picking on fire chief, but I just happen to have that page open, but it looks like. We have, this year will cost us $162,000 for the TMRS for the fire department, which is 20 folks. So does that mean that it costs the city $8,000 a year per employee essentially?
I would have to get that breakdown.
I mean, that's just an average.
Just.
That's an average.
So it.
Okay, so does all this money go to our guys or is there like a 50% admin fee or something for TMRS?
So Mr. Joyce, if I can jump in there, TMRS is a fund that's operated by TMRS and the money goes in and. It, the money that we're putting in isn't necessarily for our. Team members right now. It's going to the people that are retiring and it kind of grows that way. And from talking to, I think Ms. Fegan, it's, it's a little bit complicated in that there's a vesting period, which I think our city's at five years. There's a bunch of nuances and if that's something that we want to look at, I think it'd be best to bring in a TMRS representative the way that we have before.
Okay, sure. I mean, that sounds fine, but I'm just, you know, the. We've heard a number of times over the course of the last month or so about the one and a half match versus the two to one match thing. And I'm just trying to understand how much it costs us per employee because that number is going to go way up. If we decide that that's something that should be changed.
Sure. No, absolutely. And it, Mr. Rapley and I have talked and if that is the will of the council, I think that the absolute best solution is to bring in a representative. Who can come in with projections that can show the implications going down. Years to come, that we, we know exactly what the city is committed to going forward.
So I think Mr. Joyce and Nora has the breakout. We can provide it to you that, at a future meeting, that shows sort of the side by side, what that increase would be. And what that delta is, that difference of going from one to another from year to year.
Okay.
So we have that information. She just can provide it to you at some point.
Thank you.
If, if I may jump in there real quick, I think you brought up a very valid point, Mr. Joyce, that. Public Works hasn't received. I guess the, the attention that some of the other departments have, and I think that we're asking Rick to do more with less sometimes. So I'd really encourage council to consider. Appropriating the funds to continue elevating the level of service the way that we have throughout the other departments in the city. Mr. May, you had a comment?
Couple of comments or reviews. So I, I'm not going to be redundant. My colleagues, I think have identified the real issue that is more concerning to them than anything else. That's transparency. And how we're going to fund and where it's going to come from are priorities. As far as I'm concerned, the priorities that I see. On the use of ARP funds would be in our infrastructure and our cybersecurity. To me, that's mission critical for a lot of reasons that we don't need to get into tonight. But what I'd like to encourage, and this is for all of my colleagues as well as yourself, that we go out and look at our assets in the community. I am absolutely convinced that many of us are one phone call away from national experts on cybersecurity. And what is the most efficient and effective way that we can protect ourselves for the future? And these are funds that are not going to come out of general budget. I'm convinced of that because they're all going to be approved. So we can back those out of any kind of general fund. But the other one is the COLAs. And to me, that's something that goes to the very heart of what we offer as a city. And retaining the quality people that this community is and has grown used to relying on. So I, I guess what I'm asking for is just as much transparency as we can have. Before we get to the September 7th meeting, so we're prepared to make those tough. before we get to the September seventh meeting. Uh, so we're prepared to make those tough decisions.
And again, Mr. May, I'd like to mention that, you know, for myself, and I said it earlier, that I would try to advocate for the employees to get a three percent somehow, some way. I, as you all know, I don't get a COLA now, so, um, I'm not doing it for myself. So just to make that clear. And Mr. Paul, you know, I, I know you, I can see now that I have the budget that talks, shows TMRS going down, but again, I think comprehensively, when you look at police, fire, that line items have been adjusted up, salaries are up because of promotion. So I think it's encompassing, uh, within the departments to show, yeah, there are two largest departments being police and fire. But increases have gone up in certain areas of the budget as well as in salaries.
Understand. In response to, uh, uh, Mr. George's comment, if I may, uh, when you add them all up, it's close to a half million dollars a year we pay for TMRS now.
And, and again, I see your point, Mr. Paul, because I did mention that we had a slight increase and you know, again, um, that's why this is a propose. And when it's adopted, it becomes a slight decrease in TMRS. Thank you, sir.
Counsel, do we have any more discussion?
I have a couple of questions, if I can, disparate ones. First of all, for our IT, uh, represented consultants here that I guess they should have asked earlier. With what frequency, what is the life cycle of a server? With what regularity should they be replaced?
Manufacturers will recommend three to five years. They can be warranted up to five years.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate that.
We have a couple of servers that are in a twelve-year range.
Yes. I, I get that point, but, but it goes back to what we need to be talking about is the continuation of funding. This isn't a start-stop thing. To stay protected, to stay current, we have to be looking at this as an annual discussion.
Uh, agreed, sir. And again, as I said, 10 minutes ago, I've, five years from now, I want to have another city manager be able to say, that's the plan they've been using and it's time to upgrade X, Y, and Z servers. So we're not in the same situation five years from now.
And then my other question, which is completely different is about the COLA. You've recommended a three percent COLA, which is a ninety thousand dollar investment this year. Where would that money come from?
Well, again, I, I'm gonna talk to our financial consultant that if dollars can be used as that revenue replacement with the ARP and identify the money that we potentially would have had revenue last year. That I would, you know, recommend that we put that back in the general fund to be able to fund portion of that.
And, and I think this is.
If not, the other option is that it could come out of the fund balance. Again, we have six and a half month fund balance.
Yeah. And, and, and I think this is what I want to better understand because if we use the American Rescue Plan funds, that's one-time money, but we're committing to multi-years of this investment. Kind of like if we say, oh, we have six, six months worth of reserves. Let's go ahead and tap into it this year. Then what do we do next year or the year after that? Which is why I'm trying to understand, I think, where or, or have a clarity of where our revenue loss is this, is this year, based on the pandemic and everything else we've had. That would assure that the, this money would be here in the future to pay for it. So that we don't say, okay, we're just going to spend ourselves into taking all our reserves when we do this. I don't know if that makes sense. It wasn't quite.
No, I, I understand it. And again, trying to look back and the baseline is actually 2020 to look back and, and see where 2019 versus 2020. You, what your revenue should have been or what you had forecasted ideally in the budget. Uh, again, I'm optimistic about this year, especially with our sales tax. And that's why I've increased the sales tax portion on a, a revenue estimate as well. And, um, you know, part of the presentation I gave, uh, seemed like about a month ago now on the revenues, when we first started this process. That was consulting with Ms. Fegan's on that. And talking about what we thought were, um, areas that we would see increases in revenue for the city moving forward and again, three percent this year, maybe two percent, and then look and see the situation next year, maybe two percent. Uh, my goal again is just trying to make sure that we keep, um, at par with what other cities are doing and recruitment and retaining of employees.
Yeah. And, and I completely appreciate that. I just, again, maybe I'm just slow. Mr. Paul, you said you were slow. I'm going to say I'm slow here. Maybe I'm slow on seeing all the, all of this come together in a way that I can process.
I think in the consultant mentioned too, you, we have five years to spend this, so it would sit in that, you know, fund there, um, to be able to use moving over the next five years. I mean, I, I'm not recommending that we as a city knock out 1.1 million on the FY 22 budget.
Sure, sure. But, uh, and, uh, but I guess what my apprehension is, is that we become reliant on dollars that are one-time, whether they sit there for five years or not. Versus, you know, the arguments being made that we need to pay our own way on sanitation. This is to me the same kind of thing. If we're going to do this, we should be able to pay our own way, not be looking at one-time dollars and having to go to the well repeatedly from those one-time dollars from our reserves, whatever, to be able to pay for it.
And again, I'd have to say, and typically in cities, when they look at rates, it's done every five years to make sure that we're up to par on our expenditures versus the revenues that come in. Because then you would have to make adjustments on that rate or talk about operations and or personnel at that time.
Right, right. But I'm not, I'm not specifically talking about sanitation. I'm using it as an example though, of saying, we need to have an enterprise fund there. We need to be able to pay for it. And I just apply the same standard to how do we play, pay for this COLA year after year after year going forward now. Um, and if our reliance is on one-time dollars, then that doesn't sound like a very practical way of doing it. And I'm sure you saw me wince when you mentioned going into reserves. I know most cities may have three, but it's like, I think it should be a badge of honor to us if we have six. That the city is in good financial condition. I would be, I would be concerned about going that route too. And I just want to understand.
I think that's why, again, we have the rating that we had is because of that six-month reserve.
Yeah.
I would bet you on that one, but, um, I, I mean, I can see the, um, the hesitance, uh, from that standpoint. But again, you know, trying to put a budget together, we always look at a five-year historical and try to look at what, you know, what was done last year versus the year before critically, but look at the historical five years. I, again, I don't think that the city previous to myself or Ms. Fegan's being here has ever looked five-year historical and tried to, um, put a budget together from that standpoint. And then look five years down the road. I mean, that's difficult on the revenue side. I think you tried to forecast maybe a year or two out on the revenue side. And again, trying to be optimistic that your economic condition of your city is in pretty good shape, which at this time, I think it's pretty good based on the sales tax and the, um, sort of businesses that are about to be in the pipeline here. I think that's only going to improve in the next year or two. So I can only try to look out two years. I know, Mr. Gregory, I can't, I can't show five years, you know, but two years, I feel pretty good about two years, um, based on the new businesses coming in line and, and the activity. But that answers your question, sir.
Okay, counsel. If there's no further discussion, we will proceed to announcements. Do we have any announcements, Mr. May? I'm skipping ahead because nobody else is giving me inclination.
Nothing tonight. I'll leave that to Mr.
Oh, you're already getting ready. Okay. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Air, I move that we adjourn.
Thank you, Mr. May. Second, I'm Mr. Paul. All in favor? Unanimous, eight, 11, meeting is adjourned. Everybody have a good evening. Thank you for joining us.